Hello, good evening. This is a meeting of the Athens Board of Zoning Appeals. The time is 7:00 PM and the date is November 15, 2011. This time I will call a meeting to order. The board consists of five members and two alternates. The alternates taking full part in the discussions and becoming a voting member in the absence of a member or when a member abstains for conflict of interest. Present tonight are John Lovell -- I'm sorry, not John, Greg Lovell, John Golsey, myself, Michelle Pappy-Drebel, Betty Hollow, Lisa Carson, and Kate Towsley. And tonight we will -- Lisa will be voting as a full member. I'm the acting chair this evening. Also present are the zoning administrator, John Paskey, and the secretary, Paul Eschenbacher. The board operates according to the following procedure. The chair will name and describe the case. The zoning administrator or secretary will state the basis of the objection and the applicable facts or conditions pertaining to the case. The appellant or their representative will give reason why the appeal should be viewed favorably. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in general comment will be heard. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be heard. If necessary, the appellant or their representative will offer concluding summary or rebuttal remarks. Testimony from the floor shall then be closed. The board will deliberate and render a decision. According to Athens City Code 23.07.03B, the board has power to grant variances from the strict application of the code, provided the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the code is observed, public safety and welfare are secured, and substantial justice is done. According to Athens City Code Section 23.07.10C, variances from the code shall not be granted unless the board finds, based on direct specific findings of fact, that each of the following conditions has been supported. Practical difficulty and undue hardship because of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions pertaining to a specific piece of property, a literal enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty or undue hardship that is unnecessary to the achievement of public purposes. Exceptional circumstances. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes or uses in the same zone. Preservation of equal property rights. Little interpretation of these regulations will deprive the appellant of rights commonly enjoyed by others in the same zone and the same vicinity, while a granting of the requested variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other properties in the same zone in the same vicinity. Minimum variance. The variance granted is the minimum variance required to make possible the reasonable use of the property. Absence of detriment. The authorizing of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the purpose of the zoning code or the public interest. Not of a general nature. The condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of said property for which variance is sought, one or the other or in combination, is not of so general recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation. Any person, resident, or officer, department, or appointed body of the city of Athens aggrieved by a decision of the board may petition the Athens County Court of Common Pleas concerning the illegality of the decision. Such petition must be filed within 30 days after the mailing of the decision of the board to the applicant. There are three cases on tonight's agenda. We have case number 11-19V, 145 East State Street. Lilly Chandler Glover is the applicant -- or appellant, sorry. Case number two, case 11-20V, 498 Richland Avenue. Richard Schultz is the appellant. Case number three, 11-21V, 25 Campbell Street. Art Ostrich, appellant. I think we had our final member arrive, Joan Kornansky. So Lisa, I guess we'll have Joan vote tonight. So the board is required to take testimony under oath. Please stand. Would anyone wishing to speak concerning an item on the agenda, please stand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you will present to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Okay, on to our first case. Mr. Eschenbacher?
First case is pretty self-explanatory. The fence in question is in the front setback. Two points I'd want to make in response to the appellant's narrative. Number one is that Officer Mullins has told me that he did accurately describe the limits and regulations and rules about the fence and its location. And the second thing is that the appellant has claimed that moving the fence back to the regulation line would cost more than half of the yard. I did some measurements today, and at most, moving the fence back to where the ordinance says it should be would cause about a loss of somewhere between 15% and 20% of the fenced-in area. So if you have any questions?
I have a general question. The rationale or the reason for the fence not to be in the, you know, in that front zone, is that because of the access? Or what is the reason for that?
Generally, access. There's -- I read something a long time ago about keeping stuff off the front setback is also for aesthetic reasons, but mostly it's for ease of access and, in some cases, traffic visibility and so forth.
Okay, thanks.
Ease of access to what?
Possible utility lines. Not all lines are under the street, so.
Paul, was your first -- excuse me, your first statement when the code officer explained the setbacks and everything, that was done before the fence was built?
Yes.
Okay.
So we do all have to admit that they did call -- the appellant did call to request if this was appropriate?
Yes, as I understand it, they called to explain the project they wanted to do and to see what limitations or regulations were to do with it.
Can you comment on the narrative, the third point that suggests that if the front door is located on the Morris Avenue side of the house, it wouldn't be an issue at all? Is that --
I'm not exactly sure of that. I think it's just in general reference that, for instance, further down East State Street, there's another fence that comes fairly close to the rightway, if not as close as this fence. That fence has been there for a while. I'm not sure what else she's in reference to you could ask.
Have you had any complaints about this fence, or this was an inspection that you just found out about?
No. It was just an inspection.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Or Mr. Paskey, secretary? Okay. Would you please come to the podium and state your name and address, please?
My name is Lilly Chandler Glover and --
Over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I like computers, I guess I was. Oh, I actually got my own personal cover. My name is Lilly Chandler Glover and my address is 145 East State Street. And I actually have packets for you guys that also have -- I think there are 10 or more letters from my neighbors and other people that would be concerned.
You can bring them forward.
I only have five packets though, so they go to --
Good share.
Yeah. That's the narrative, and then right after the narrative, I think, the letters start.
Oh, this is -- yeah, we've had all this stuff set.
Yeah, yeah, but in the middle, the middle chunk is --
He's added more.
Yeah, are the letters. So I'm sorry that you have to kind of dig through, but here's one from my next door neighbor too. Here's that one.
Let's start down there and review that. I'll read it later.
Okay. So, and actually wasn't able to get ahold of Demetrius Progras, who owns the property that is adjacent to me and that shares the fence, who actually were about issues between his rental property and my, you know, home, where we were trying to garden and ending up with a lot of beer cans instead. I don't want this to be a bashing of anybody, but I called and in the narrative stated and -- and I understand where miscommunication could possibly have happened. I'm a little sad that I feel like I have to record all of my conversations with anybody at this point because what I'm getting from -- and Paul has always done what he said he was going to do, but when I spoke with Officer Mullins, he got to the point after me asking him so many times to make sure that we were doing things properly, where he was obviously irritated at me and wanted to get off the phone. I asked him to come to the property, asked him if he understood how it sat on the corner and how it wasn't necessarily going to be paralell with the street where the front door was. And he said, "Yes, yes, I totally understand what you're talking about. You just have to do this. Is it going to be six feet or under? Yes, it is." "Okay. Right angle or less from the back -- the front corner of your house back?" "Okay." You know, I mean, it was the same thing over and over and over again, and I finally thought, well, I mean, maybe it really is that easy? Because I had originally called just trying to ask how to get a permit. And he said, "Don't bother getting a permit. You don't have to get a permit." And, "Are you sure I don't have to get a permit?" You know, and so I just feel like, I don't know, I guess it doesn't matter how I feel. But with about two days left of completion, we're obviously in a really prominent location. There's no way to drive by it without seeing what was going on, which, of course, we weren't trying to hide anything because at the time, we thought we were doing everything completely within code. And can I add also that I grew up with code enforcement pretty much drilled into my brain. We've had rental properties my entire life. We have lived in half of them. Code enforcement has always been a part of, kind of, my home life. And so, and I've never had an issue. So, you know, I thought what I was doing was right. Now we end up with this really expensive fence that we thought was making, you know, we thought we were making the neighborhood look nicer, thought it was making it safe for my child. And if it is true that it's 15% to 20% of the yard lost by moving that fence, not only is it a ton of money lost, which I can't afford, I barely scraped by even building the fence, but 15% to 20% of my side yard is a lot of my yard. It's not a huge yard. I have a camera that has a apparently bum memory card in it, because when I tried to print out the pictures that I took of the fence for you guys, it wasn't registering them on any computer, so I'd be happy to pass the camera around if you guys want to look at it, and I apologize. But honestly, what it comes down to is, had I been told what Code Officer Eschenbacher is saying in the first place, I wouldn't have built the fence. I honestly would have probably moved on with life and made it another student rental and said, you know, "I'm going somewhere where I can have a yard for my kids to play in." What, I mean, you know, if I can't protect them from East State Street, then there's really no point in living there. So, and this has been, I know it's just a fence, but this has been like a really, really big deal. So, I guess that's all I really have to say on my own, but if you guys have questions, sorry, you know.
Take a breath there. Yeah, take a breath. Any questions from the board?
Are you planning on painting the fence?
Yeah, it needs to be finished, actually. Not finished, but, you know, sprayed with like the cedar spray. We actually built it with cedar too, so that it looked nicer and wasn't that, you know, pine that just ends up bowing and snapping. So, yeah, it needs to have the sealant on it, and we were going to seal it with a darker. But we kind of stopped doing anything to it because it's like, you know, at this point of unease, I don't really know, I don't have money to put into it right this second.
Do you offhand know the dimensions of the enclosed area inside the fence? I mean, I looked through, I didn't look very large because the garage is then on the other side of the house, but do you have any idea what the dimensions are?
I don't, but there is the drawing that my husband did of, with the actual permit application that we had to submit just to have it refused to see you guys. That is in there too.
Was that in the packet? That was in the packet you gave us, right?
Yeah, it should be in the packet I gave you.
Oh, okay.
So 38 by -- it's 38.5 by 71.5. So across the front of the house, the front --
And some of it is actually not very usable. There's actually behind the garage, there's a pretty big divot that is not like leveled off usable ground.
So across the front of the State Street side is 38.5, and then along the side between the two properties is 71.5. Behind the garage, right, so maybe it's about, I don't know.
It's about 38 by 38. It's almost square, maybe?
It's pretty rectangular.
Okay.
And when we were doing this to err on the side of caution, because I was told that it had to be at a 90-degree angle or less, we actually went in from it because I didn't want it to be on this, you know, is that 90 degrees or just a little bit more? And so we went back, and the house that I referred to in the narrative, that is, I believe its address is on Elmwood, has almost, almost to the dot, the exact same placement as my fence, only their front door is on a different side.
I think that house received a variance, too.
That house received a variance?
I think so.
All right. Any questions? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the variance?
I don't think anybody's here.
Anybody to speak in opposition?
I'm not in opposition, I'm sorry, I got late. Besides the letters that she gave you, we also received another email in support of it, so with your permission, I'll go ahead and read it.
That'd be fine, we have a lot of letters here.
This is addressed to the zoning administrator. Dear Mr. Paskey, I am a resident of 49 Utah Place and own a business at 3 West Dymson Avenue in the city of Athens. I am familiar with Mrs. Alpano's fence on her property and think it is well constructed and does nothing detrimental to the neighborhood. I would encourage the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve her nominal request for variance as it strikes me that this is exactly the type of relief the board was put into place to address. If more information on my position is desired, please feel free to contact me at the number below. Best regards, Chris Garrick of Garrick and Garrick.
Thank you. And we do need to read some of the other letters. Let me just say, okay, so no one in opposition? Any more general comment?
I'd just like to say I think we need to look at our code regards to permits not being required for fences because things like this happen after the fact.
I really wanted him to come down and look at it, too. I was just, like, I just thought like this was going to happen, and then he was so adamant that I thought, maybe this will just be okay this time, but then it's just, so.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other notes down there or letters you guys?
Not that you don't have.
Not that you don't have, they're all in there.
They're all in there.
There's additional ones in the packet.
All right, we have quite a few letters. I see Mr. Garrick's. This is written by Colleen Carew, who lives at 64 Morris Avenue. "I'm writing in support of you seeking a variance for your newly constructed fence. I have a great interest in this being that I'm a neighbor just down the street from you. Also in a quarter house that once was a rental with a fenced yard laid out the same as yours. In addition, I am the owner of two rental properties, so I am familiar with the code office. I am also the mother of a young child and thus am particularly interested in our neighborhood's safety. Support your fence because it is tastefully done and adds to the neighborhood aesthetic. East State Street is busy and dirty, to put it mildly, while your new fence affords you privacy and your children's safety. One only has to make a look, take a look to see that it also improves the neighborhood. I see nothing wrong with the fence and am troubled by the lack of consistency and cooperation you have encountered with the code office. Please let me know if I can be of further support." This letter comes from Bob Klein, 71 Morris. "I commented before how nicely done your fence was and how it adds rather than subtracts on aesthetic as well as safety value levels. I will stand by that. I support your variance request." Kelly in Fizuel, do you know?
Fizel.
Fizel.
Huck.
Huck. "We fully support your fence project and compel the city to extend your zoning variance in order to allow you to complete your fence project." They live at 171 East State Street. Liz Mall Broker. "I am in support of your fence. I think it looks great and very much needed for safety on that corner. I own 118 and 122 East State." Hillary Burrhands. "We have lived on Morris Avenue for 26 years and have been so pleased in the past few years to see more houses in our area becoming homeowner residences instead of student rentals. The house that Lilly and Colin live in on the corner of East State and Morris is a case in point. Instead of having a rather rundown-looking rental in that prominent location, there is a beautiful home with great flowers and lawn, and now a nice fence to keep their children safe from the busy street. I can't see any reason why tax-paying citizens of Athens, having been given erroneous information when they attempted in good faith to obtain a building permit, follow zoning rules, should be required to change their plans at great expense. This especially when the fence is not opposed by any of the neighbors, blocks nobody's view, and looks good. We hope you will grant a variance for this fence. We think it would be the right thing to do. Thanks for your consideration of these points." Kaylee Hinton, 23 Morris Avenue. "I fully support the fence at the Chandler-Glover residence. It is my understanding that Lilly, an as respectable businesswoman and community member, took full measure before building to ensure the fence on their property was not in violation with zoning. It is my understanding she was given an approval by code office enforcement before building. As a neighbor, I approve of the fence as it protects pets and children. They live on two very busy, high-traffic streets before the fence was built. I have seen people walk through their yard, trample over their garden, and litter on their property. The fence is attractive and fits in with the neighborhood." Susan Mitchell, 199 East State. "Lilly Chandler and her family need this fence with a young child in grade school and another on the way. Privacy from vehicular and pedestrian traffic is imperative. Since Lilly moved into this house, she has enhanced the neighborhood with her personality and her young, growing family. The fence keeps all of them safe. The quality construction of the fence and all, Lilly's landscape and the front side of the home is excellent. Please allow this variance for the safety of the family and for the quality of the This is from Darlene Smith. "Colin and Lilly Glover are my next-door neighbors. This summer, they built a beautiful fence so their child and dogs would not be endangered on East State Street. It is lovely to see, when driving down East State Street, it makes their home look like a real home and not a student rental. That fence is a great addition to our neighborhood." Okay. Is anyone here ready to make a motion?
I have one more question for Paul. There's a copy of the check for $50, this building permit. What was that for?
Well, yeah, unfortunately, as John said, there's no permit for building fences as long as it's under six feet. Well, she wanted to keep the fence, and unfortunately, the only way you can keep the fence is to get a variance, and the only way to get a variance is to have a permit application refused. So it's unusual circumstances, but that was the avenue she had to take in order to appear before the board.
Okay, any discussion here on the board?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Ready to make a motion?
I move, board, consider case 11-19V, appellant Mullins, Chandler Glover, property at 145 East State Streets and R3, requesting a variance from Athens City Code 230314 to allow construction of a fence in the front setback two feet from the rightaway line, but a minimum requirement is to have the fence no less than 12.5 feet from the rightaway line.
Just a second. Okay, so we'll go through the findings. Okay, practical difficulty and undue hardship.
Well, for the property, it's kind of, the difficulty is that it's set at an angle, and it makes it really awkward to define, to fit in with the pattern of all the other houses. So I think that is a practical difficulty.
The setback issue.
The undue hardship is that it's on a busy street, a residential area.
No? Okay. Exceptional circumstances.
That's what you said also.
Absolutely. Better than spell. Preservation of equal property rights.
Well, I think Mr. Paskey pointed out that there is a fence just down the street in very similar circumstances.
Minimum variance.
Well, to use the property, you know, this probably would be minimum.
Well, the other things, if we're talking about what are the requirements for having this farther from the setback, and one of them is aesthetic, I cross that off because I don't think it is an impediment to the aesthetic sense of the neighborhood. I don't think that it impairs anyone's vision while they're driving through traffic. It's not in the way at all. So the only consideration would be the utility lines, and I don't know exactly how to talk about that because I don't know where they are. So I would consider it minimum because I don't need to consider two of the three things we listed.
Absence of detriment.
Well, clearly the neighbors have no objection to it.
No, no neighbor objection.
Unless there's some other detriment, like the utility lines, I don't see any problem with that.
Not of a general nature.
Well, Mr. Paskey suggests that maybe we need to have permits for fences, but he'll have to take that up rather than us.
I know some people on count. We'll talk.
Take a vote, Mr. Lovell?
I vote no.
I vote yes.
Mr. Golsey?
I vote yes.
Good.
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes as well. You guys, let's put that in.
Do you guys need me?
No.
Okay.
So case number two is 25 Campbell Street, Zone B3, case 11-21V. The appellant, that's what these were.
You said that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. My mistake. Case number 11-20V, Zone B2, 498 Richland Avenue, Richard Schultz. Case number 11-20V, Zone B2, 498 Richland Avenue, Richard Schultz, appellate. Mr. Eschenbacher?
Uh, I'll defer this one to the gentleman in Stricker. He has a little knowledge of it than I do.
They've just made an application to put a restaurant in the old west, is it the West Virginia Electric Supply Building?
Yes.
And the current building only has 11, possibly 12 parking spaces if it was to be restriped. Um, and based on the square footage of the building and our code, it requires 19. So they're requesting a variance.
This says 17.
Seventeen.
Says 17 in here.
Should be 19.
What?
Was it 17?
All right.
17.
My bad.
Would those parking spaces be behind the building?
No, they can't put any behind it. It's in front.
They can get, they can get 11 spaces in the front?
Currently, they are 11 spaces in front.
Okay.
There's a space for about eight right now, but they can add maybe two or three more.
Yeah.
They'll go in front of that, the office.
But there's, there's no way to put a driveway to go behind the building?
A, behind the building, I believe, is too steep, isn't it?
Well, there seem to be some space before the.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Okay. Okay. We could ask that question.
Well, do you have a question about square footage and parking spaces? So according to code, for every 200 square foot, you need a parking space. In the application, it says there's 3,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Sounds like a lot. I don't have it, but.
Well, that's what it says, um, in this application he submitted. And if you divide 200 and $3,000, you get 15 spaces. But then, in, in, in the appellate's narrative, he says that if he, that he, there's only 1,600 square feet. So I'm really confused as to what we're talking about.
What Mr. Schultz was doing. Yeah, the.
Okay.
What he was, what his part of it was, was just calculating the square footage of the dining area.
Okay.
To get his calculations. But even if you did that, you still gotta calculate in the rest of the building for whatever other use that may be. So when you calculate the dining area, then throw in how much the use is for the kitchen, which unfortunately, our code doesn't really define the kitchen. And then there's a, an area at the far left-hand end that was a variance granted years ago for storage of conduit and such for the electric company. Calculate that all in for the total square footage of the building, and I just divided the total square footage of the building by 200 square foot to get the 17. So it must be 3,400 square foot.
Right, okay. That's what I was just trying to check on exactly what we had to consider as square footage usage or.
Right. And.
Kitchen and.
And we have in the past definitely allowed for reductions in the, um, kitchen space, the restrooms, et cetera, if it broke out and just count in the dining area. But I believe the occupancy load on the dining area was 190 people.
No, no, it's 97 plus, I show 10 employees.
Okay, so 100 and some people would.
Hundred and seven.
So that's why I kept it at the 17 parking space.
Okay, okay.
Now, John, is there any rule on backing up to the Richland Avenue or does it have to be going forward?
Well, it's existing, and as I'm sure all of you know, there's a general, there's a big plan coming in the near future for Richland to be redone. One of the ones that is being done right now that we are accommodating, I know a lot of people have called and asked about the Athens, the Sun 'n Fun Building that's being built. It does appear to be close to the street, and it is, but it needs some requirements of code. But the existing building's gonna be tore down, and then they'll be able to put their parking in the way it's supposed to be with one curb cut and the parking off. So I did talk to Annie Stone, Engineering Public Works Director, about this, and he has a suggestion that when that Richland Avenue is redone, whenever, that maybe some sort of a curved approach is put up on it. So you kinda have to do like Larry's Hot Dogs is doing right now, where you really just can't back out onto the street. You kinda have to cut it and then drive behind the cars. And I think there'd be room to do this here. But that would be when Richland Avenue was redeveloped and replanned. It is obviously the, the main goal is to not have the continual pull-in off the streets of these parking spaces on Richland because it is a traffic hazard, so.
They used to give a ticket a while back.
We're backing straight out.
Yeah, I noticed that today when I was over there looking at the property. That is pretty dangerous. Any other questions from the board? Okay. The appellate, may come forward.
If you can't see this from here, I'll move it closer.
Name and address, please, sir.
Um, Richard Schultz, 41228 Albany, Ohio. I represent the, uh, the Wayne family over there. I'm the architect.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the project?
Sure. Can you see it? I'll be moving a little closer.
I, I think a little closer. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, up in the upper right-hand corner, represents the site plan. This is Richland Avenue. All this area of the real property goes up very steeply. So none of this land is available here. And there is 11 spaces in front of the building. We're actually setting this one back and be the handicap parking, a van access area off to the side. When I talked to John Patskey, we looked at this and we thought we could restripe it and still be within the limit of the width of the parking spaces and possibly get a 12th space there. But this, you know, this is all West Virginia Electric, and I think the discrepancy is, this is, in this boundary here is the dining area. This is the restrooms, this is the kitchen. And we're looking at the project, we're about 3,400 square feet, but this is the storage area from the electric, electric supply company that they only really isn't gonna utilize for anything. When John talked about, you know, projecting about 97 seating areas here, places for people to sit, and it's based on the Ohio Building Code. But in the kitchen area, which is quite large, there could be three to five employees working in there. So that was a little discrepancy on the parking. But this, you know, this project, not only, you know, has people driving up, there's a lot of walk-in traffic from the student rentals. There's, um, the buses go by here, I think, I believe up to 6 o'clock at night, and they come by every hour. So there's some alternative transportation methods there.
Have you considered maybe leasing some parking space from across the street?
Um, yes, I've talked to Kathleen Dawson, who owns the old Dry Cleaners. And she's happy to, I talked to her today. I don't have a letter of support for her, but she's happy to rent at least six spaces to make up the difference. And Mike Moore over at his, uh, his building, the Morrison Elementary School is, is happy to rent spaces also.
Do you know the distance between, um, the address and, I mean, I drove and pulled in all of those places. I mean, it's 250 feet, but then you'd have to get a variance because it's not.
Well, I think at the old Dry Cleaners, I don't know what to call the building anymore.
Well, Quality Dry Cleaners.
Okay. That's very close, you know, that's diagonally across the.
So that's got to be 250 feet or less.
Or less, yeah. But I think Old Morrison School, down the pension, old architects, we have probably three businesses. We have Cars, Audiology, Chuck Lindell, the Bank, and then.
Right.
So that's, that's probably approaching 200 feet.
If you had 10 people driving, five employees, you're out of space. Where are people gonna park? You can't park on the street, right?
Well, the employees will be brought to the job, um, by, by Jim, by the owner. He'll be taking, taking employees to and from.
But then his vehicle will be there at least.
Yes.
And perhaps another one, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's a good possibility.
Or across the street if you leased it, because if.
Well, right, the point is, is that.
You wouldn't wanna use it.
The overflow has to go somewhere.
Right.
So it just seems the most logical thing is to come back with a variance for off-site parking.
Mm-hmm.
Because.
Do we need to come back, or can't we decide?
I mean, if it's less than 250, you don't even have to come to us.
It is, if it's a lease.
It's a lease.
Oh, you have the owner's property.
Yes.
So this would be a lease.
Yeah, this would have to be a lease, but, I mean, it's just that they're gonna have to park somewhere, you know, I just.
And I'd like to add that those spaces would have to be spaces that are provided, that are not required at those other buildings, you know? We talked about that earlier.
And I'm confident that at the Quality Dry Cleaners, there's enough spaces, because right now, I believe it's two apartments in there plus the dentist's office.
Well, even when you, in the entrance and exit points, you know, there's huge amount of space.
There's a lot of.
That you could do parking right along the side without, I don't think.
Mr. Schultz, could you bring that forward just a little further? I wanna see how close these spaces go to the sidewalk and the, so.
Well, there's, I don't know if there is a sidewalk there.
So again, well, when the street is redone, there will be.
Well, there is a sidewalk.
How would you put it? Well, I mean, it's part of the.
It's part of the asphalt.
It's part of the asphalt, but, so here we get into this whole issue with the backing out. I mean, this is pretty serious.
Well, that would still be an issue no matter what. I mean, the old building was, uh, the reason that they're different, it's needing a variance now is because it's a higher use, being a restaurant, one per 200. Before, it was kind of, as electric supply, it was required at one per 300. So that had the adequate of parking for the previous building. So another business could come in here with that use, and the parking would be acceptable. And I don't think, when they redo the plan for Richland, that we're gonna have to make businesses totally eliminated if they're there. And I can't speak to that entirely because the study hadn't been done, but, so.
Well, the previous business, they all, the most they had, maybe two or three cars usually. And it was the daytime, their operation.
But it was required to have the 11. Yeah, yeah.
And there was times that, that lot was, you know, full, there was a lot of traffic coming in midday or early morning from the contractors to.
Yeah, I, I just have concerns with the safety right then and there. I mean, it is.
I have a concern, but, but it's gonna be with any project that happens here.
Right.
Did, did, no one has any measurements for the, uh, the end of the parking space? How much clearance is there? Typically, thinking of one little shop next to the pharmacy on Stimson Avenue, and I pulled in there, and it doesn't look like there's much room, but there's a curb, a sidewalk, and you, there's an ingress and an egress, and you pull in the spot, and then you have to back around and pull out. And you don't need as much space as you think. So I'm, I just don't know how much space is required, and if there is sufficient space to back into the lot and then pull out. I don't know.
Well, my concern is when the road is redone, and if there was a curb there.
Is there enough room to back out without going over the curb?
Right, because you can't go back over the curb.
Right.
Correct. Right. Well, it's, you could. It's, it's not one of them drop-off speed and, and the, like, Larry, if you really, my vehicle could definitely go over it, you know?
But I don't think we're, we.
That's not.
Don't want to do that. We don't want to plan for projects that are doing that.
And I don't, what's the, what would you say it was from the curb to the front of the, the 30 feet?
Well, we're close to 30 feet to the curb.
From the, from the edge of the street, the curb up to the pro, uh, the side of the building.
Yeah, I'm just interpreting, I got off a survey, I have a scale, but I mean, you can see that also, so.
Yeah.
But this is the current edge of the road, it's just the right-of-way, so we're showing 21, 21 feet plus, I think from this.
The center, from the center? This is the center of Richland, right?
That, that is the center.
Right.
But there's also this, there's 20 feet from the center to the, to the right-of-way, I think. Anyway, we're showing this, just over 21 feet from this point to that, to the edge of the right-of-way, and then 12.77 from the right-of-way to the curb, I think. I don't think so, because the, yeah, so from the right-of-way to the curb, so we have 30, we have 12, 30, 33 plus feet, 34 feet from here to the curb.
So it goes up 10 to back up into.
Yeah, 20, 18 or 20 from the spot, and you have 10 or 12.
So 10 feet is, you can just barely make it.
Yeah.
Pretty tight.
Pretty tight.
I think the cars are really close together, it makes it harder.
But I would think when they, whatever they're gonna do in Richland, they're not gonna come across here and take, it'd be hard to take that away from those property owners on that side.
Right. Annie's talked about diagonal parking as well.
Diagonal.
Yeah, where you come in.
But that would be less, that would be less parking spots than if, if you did diagonal.
You'd lose probably one.
Yeah, we're talking, lose one.
Lose one.
Yeah. Put them in diagonal, then have them come in one entry, and then.
Right.
What happened up, up from the.
A separate ingress and.
You'd have, remember, the 30-foot, if they were diagonal, even now, with 10-foot behind and 20-foot parking space, it can be done. It's, it's not easy, but.
But then you'd just be leasing one more additional spot if you're already considering leasing. And it, for the future, what's gonna happen on that road? If they did a diagonal, so they'd lose one spot because of where they were going, so.
Hey, I guess what I'm saying, if you looked down at least that portion of the road, it 'd be hard to take property from, from this, from 498, and it'd be hard to take property from C and E, and from Hudson Tire along that.
Oh, I was not thinking of taking property.
No, I'm saying when, when this happens, when we talk about redeveloping Richland Avenue, and try to get an ingress and exit out of, out of all the spaces, so you're not backing out, they'll be hard pressed to take it from this segment of the road from these property owners. They'll have to jump across the street where people actually have front yards, similar to what they did in the plains.
Well, we've had some issues in the past where parking areas have been placed and cars are in sidewalk areas. I mean, if you're on that side of the street, it's a busy street, you're not necessarily gonna wanna cross because there's a vehicle, there's just some safety issues there.
Mm-hmm.
We just have to keep that in mind, I think. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Schultz?
The building is putting like, looks like industrial building. It's gonna be in the cosmetic, uh.
Um, it's a pre-engineered, what they call pre-engineered building with metal siding.
To look like a Chinese restaurant.
I think more on the interior. We're gonna add another large window. We're gonna put a large window over here. Um, it'll have, it'll have handicap access off of this side, and then maybe a vestibule. I don't think we're really gonna change the look of the building very much.
On your side.
I guess one improvement is on the existing building, here, there's that big metal ramp to unload trucks. That's gonna go away, the overhead door's gonna come out, and then we'll just match it in with the siding. So that's, that's, gets it away from the industrial look a little bit.
So the service entrance for food deliveries will be on this end?
It'll be back there on this end.
Yeah.
And it'll be, and it's about the same location where it was, it just will get rid of the overhead door.
I agree with you about being concerned about the safety, but in other circumstances, we have been told that it is not our business to tend to the safety.
Correct.
That other people will, in fact, address.
No matter what the use, the safety's an issue.
It is an issue, but we have.
That's something we have to decide.
We have been told in other circumstances that it's not our job to consider that.
Right. I think the way to look at it is the number of parking spaces, and I just discussed to Mr. Eschenbacher that if, uh, wanting to do a, grant the variance based on a condition that they come up with a lease parking for the remaining, what, six, seven, or five, six spots, um, within 250-foot, you can grant that on a condition, and then they would have to show up for that lease.
Sure.
they would have to show up for that lease, you know, down the road before we would issue any permits.
I would just like to throw safety out there just because we can't, so.
No, I appreciate that.
But, but I know it's not our job.
Right. And I talked to Service Safety Director today, because I have no questions about bus stops because a lot of students use buses. And Paula was hoping through this study that they're going to increase the hours of the public transportation through there, and hopefully that'll be helpful.
That'll be good for business.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I do have, you know, I think five or six letters of businesses that are in support.
We have quite a few letters here, if there's something maybe that isn't.
I think you have copies of what I know.
Yes. Okay. All right, any more comments for Mr. Schultz at this time?
What about this letter from, should he address this letter or the email from Don Linder with the concern about his own?
Don is here.
Don is here, so I think that we can.
So he'll speak to us.
And I'm also showing here, Don's property is not shown here, but it's adjacent on the south side here, just Pennsylvania, where a fence could go. I've talked to John about it, not being in the right of the fence setback, and right now I have it shown approximately outside of the right of way. And I don't really think the fence would need to go all the way towards the street to keep other vehicles from getting into Don's lot, but Don is speaking there.
All right. Is there any one here who would like to speak in favor of this project? Mr. Linder? Yes, please. Thank you, just state your name and address.
Hi, Don Linder, three, three, five, zero, Conifer Lane, Albany, Ohio. I own two adjacent properties to the subject property at five hundred and five oh two Rich from the avenue. They are rental properties, and I am, you know, I advocate for business development, and I had no objection to the placement of a restaurant at that location, or really for that matter, any business. You know, my personal experience with the parking there, I used to use West Virginia Electric, I didn't have to back out into the, to the Richland Avenue ever. There was enough room in front of the building that allowed you to back out even with other vehicles there, so I have personal experience with that. Plus I use the adjoining property, my own, and back, you know, back out and turn around in that space, I don't think that's really a significant safety problem. I think it would be more for the driving ability of an individual rather than the room that's, that's there now. I did have some concern, was I had expressed to Mr. Schultz relative to trying to create a barrier between my property and the subject property, just so I didn't have overflow, you know, impeding into the use of my property for the tenants there. So that has been addressed to my satisfaction. I received a letter from the owners of the property that are going to do a restaurant, so, you know, I'm all in support of the property and the efforts that are undertaken.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak for the project in favor?
I just wanted to say one thing.
You have, just so you're on record, sorry, so you can be heard.
Yeah, I mean, it's just what Don, excuse me, it's just what Don said about not have to back out into the street, and I just realized I've spent a lot of time at the property, and I've never found it hard to just back out and pull straight forward. It's actually more difficult at C and E when you're trying to deal with that because of the sidewalk and the curb, so really, I, you know, now that I think of all what Don's saying.
No elevation, really.
Yeah, it's all flat and it's not very hard to do that.
Okay, thank you.
One other comment, I live on that side of town, so driving home and picking up some Chinese would be very convenient.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Any general comment? Okay, I'm going to read the letters that have been sent. Mr. Linder, I'm not going to read your letter since you spoke. To whom it may concern, I'm a property owner at four ninety-nine Richland Avenue. I do not object to managing Wang, did I say that correctly? Having less than the required number of parking spaces for his business at four ninety-eight Richland Avenue, I welcome his business into the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. Jane Ann Carr, Anishtef. Dear Mr. Paskey, it has been brought to my attention that Mr. Wang has requested a variance for four ninety-eight Richland Avenue for parking for a Chinese restaurant. I presently own properties at five oh seven, five eighteen, and five nineteen Richland Avenue, and feel that the addition of a restaurant at that location would provide a service to our end of Richland Avenue. Presently, most of my tenants have to drive to get to lunch. By adding a restaurant to our area, we would be able to walk this facility for lunch. I would encourage the board of zoning appeals to grant this very, variance. Thank you, Michael Noel, Anishtef and Associates. Those are the three, well, is there any other letters? I think that's.
Oh, yeah. Do you guys see that? Here's some in here.
Okay, okay. Dear Mr. Paskey, it has been brought to my attention that Mr. Wang has requested a variance of four ninety-eight Richland Avenue for parking for a Chinese restaurant. I presently own property at five oh one Richland Avenue, and feel that the addition of a restaurant at that location would provide a service to our end of Richland Avenue. Presently, most of my staff have to drive to get to lunch. By adding a restaurant to our area, we'll be able to walk to this facility for lunch. And I encourage the board of zoning appeals to grant this variance. Thank you, Chuck Windrell. Dear Mr. Paskey, I'm in support of passing the parking zoning variance for the property at four ninety-eight Richland Avenue. The dinasty restaurant will be a welcome addition to the southern end of Richland Avenue while it proves convenient for my staff to be able to walk there for lunch as well as picking up dinner at the end of the workday. Nicole Conrad, DDS, four ninety-five Richland Avenue. Okay, this is Mr. Linder. Okay. No one's seen anymore?
That's it, I think.
Okay. Any more questions for, before we open, before we close the floor?
Well, it's for code office maybe, but if, I mean, I think that they should secure parking places across this street.
That would be a condition.
Put that as a condition. Do we get a, yeah, a variance?
I think you need to vote on the request as the application is first, and then if that doesn't go through, then you can make the recommendation for the one with the option of obtaining the lease parking. Does that sound?
Well, I think if the, I mean, if the appellant's are in agreement or the law is in agreement, I think we can go have a condition first.
That makes sense.
If you had a flagrant, somebody ejects through it, they can come at the next meeting.
So do we want to make that as part?
So the condition would be a barrier for adjacent property to prevent parking and a condition of additional lease of six parking spaces within two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, I'm going to close the floor, so anyone?
He was very fine with the owners, so that would be.
Okay, go ahead. We open the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry. But now I just conferred with the owners, and they'd be very willing and happy to rent six or seven spaces, whatever's required.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a chain restaurant, Chinese restaurant, or is it?
It's a family.
Is it chain?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to close the floor. I'm going to close the floor. Okay, any further discussion before we go to the?
We need a motion.
And we need a motion.
Yes.
Yes, I move to grant a variance to the property at four nine eight Richland Avenue from section ACC twenty-three, ten oh one, table B, off-street parking requirements to allow a business with eleven parking spaces on site, where due to building size, seventeen parking spaces are the minimum requirement, with the condition that six additional spaces be leased within two hundred and fifty feet of said property.
Second. Are we adding the parking barrier?
No, that's been taken care of, you said.
Yeah. John seconded.
You said seven spaces?
Yes.
Six.
Six or seven.
I said six, they need seventeen, they've got eleven.
That's how they end up landing out, they can do as they want.
Okay, let's go through the findings. Practical difficulty and undue hardship?
Well, the difficulty really is that there is no parking behind this building because of the topography. There's a very steep hill, which prevents them using what might have been the property. And I think the hardship that would accrue would be that you couldn't have a restaurant at that space, when I think that there are probably other restaurants on the street. I can think of one, Purple Chopsticks, I'm not sure what they're required to have, but their parking spaces are precarious also. And I think, you know, as these people who've written letters have indicated, we say we want businesses in Athens, and so we should try, I think, to make that possible when we can.
Exceptional circumstances?
Again, it's the topography, it's a big building with little parking and the hill behind it.
Preservation of equal property rights?
Well, it's nice to see this property being used again as a business. I think that property has the right to continue as a business.
And I would say there's many other on the street that have similar issues with parking.
They give parking as one of the problems. They may not need as much, but.
Minimum variance?
I think with the six extra leasing.
That should be very good.
Absence of detriment?
No, actually, joint properties are in favor, in fact, they're willing to come up with leasing the additional spaces so that it can exist, so.
And we had all the support.
Letters of support.
And we have many letters of support. Not of a gentle nature?
No.
No.
In that street, yes, but generally no.
Not for the time being.
Not for the time being. Okay, let's take a vote. Ms. Krenansky?
Yes.
Ms. Hollow?
I vote yes.
Mr. LeVell?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Your variance is granted. We welcome your business to Athens.
We've had business in here before, but not this time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, case number three. This is twenty-five Campbell Street, case number eleven dash twenty-one B. This is zoned B three, and Art O'Stike is the appellant. Mr. Ashenbacher?
Let's get out the first on the main street.
Mr. Paskey?
This is a variance for permissible B three use within a hundred feet of an R zone. The current property is seventy feet away from an R zone, and that is based on our code stating that in a change of zone lines, you would go by the center line of the road or right of way or whatever it may be. And in this case, the old railroad bed is where the zone line splits. The buildings themselves are probably closer to three hundred feet apart, but the actual zone itself is seventy feet from the corner of the property of the B three part to the R zone of the Mill Street Apartments. Part of the property I'd like to add though is an M zone, which therefore would not require such, but the building itself sits on the B three part of it, so their lot is actually split by an old railroad spur to come off of the old railroad, and the northern part of that is zone B three where the building sits, the southern part of it is M. And this was, I guess, the, where the cheese factory, cheese plant, whatever it was originally housed in this location back in the mid-eighties, I believe, when it was built. So that's the request.
So, so you said that the actual building which sits on the B three?
B three section of the, yeah.
And that would be the closest side to the Mill Street Apartments, I guess that's?
I went from the very closest corner of the property.
Well, I'm talking about the building itself, you're saying the building itself is three hundred feet?
Ah, the building itself to the Mill Street buildings, I did not measure, but I would be willing, two sixty.
Two sixty.
Two sixty. I was going to say a football field away, that's how I measure things. So.
Okay, do I understand that Jacky O's now produces beer in the building on?
Correct.
Okay, and there are, of course, apartments upstairs in that building, so, okay.
But I don't think they bottle.
Do you bottle?
Well, wait, he hasn't been to the podium yet, Liz.
Sorry about that.
Anything else, any questions we have for the code office?
Bottling works as a permissible use in the B three, but with the condition it was a hundred feet away, so that's why it's here, so. And I went from property line to property line, it's not even property line, zoning line to zoning line, so.
I was kind of confused whether this was a use permit or a variance.
It'd be a variance to be with, to allow this use to occur within one hundred feet.
They mentioned something about having maybe drive-through or maybe point of sale, and they all have to be enclosed, I believe, and require two hundred feet, there's some other sections of the same.
I don't care if you're having a drive-through or not.
No drive-through.
No drive-through, no sales, because it says in here.
We'll ask him when he comes up.
All right, says eventually selling cakes or even eventually bottles.
Okay, any more questions for the code office? No. Okay.
You can stand by the computer, there's a mic there.
Great.
Okay, great.
It's Art O'Stike, forty-five hundred Angel Ridge Road, and I have some documents to give to you guys.
And we apparently have lots of questions for you.
We have a lot.
Thank you. Thank you for the color.
Yeah, no, I was surprised when I saw this this morning too.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm here because I've been running Jacky O's for five plus years, actually it'll be six years in two weeks, and we're looking to expand to a production facility, and we'd like to do that at twenty-five Campbell Street, according to the picture in front of you, that nice colored image, and Mr. Paskey was kind of talking about this, that here's the piece of property in question, and this is an M zone, B three, and then an R three. And he kind of talked about the old railroad bed that runs through here, that it was kind of split down the middle, not necessarily in the middle, fifty feet went to this side and seventy-five feet got joined into the R three zone. And, but as he talked about, so from what I understand, John, correct me if I'm wrong please, but from here to here is seventy feet.
I actually did major to the middle of the right of way, or I mean, the railroad bed, so I did go by the colors, so that is correct, what he's saying is correct.
And so that's the main issue, question, according to code, the bottling works must be within, or a hundred feet away from, the properties must be a hundred feet away from each other, at seventy feet from that R three, and I have some pictures that we'll go to a little bit later if you guys have more questions. I've addressed the points on the appeal form for the, to you guys. The granting of this variance is in accord with the code of the zone the property is located. The area in question borders M zones, and the brewery will have little change upon the area for which it's intended. It will not be injurious to the public, to the area or public welfare. In order to work with the city and to try to make this happen, we'd be willing to restrict hours of operation. Current brewing and bottling operations are not noisy, and it seems to me that term bottling works, which I don't really have a definitive definition for, seems like a term from, you know, more of an industrial United States where things were probably much noisier, and today's breweries necessitate commonness and character. We are really into our high-end products, we don't brew lagers or things on those levels, we're working for a more full-flavored product, and in order to do that, you're. And in order to do that, you need to be very clean and orderly with everything going on there.
Is there an odor?
What's that?
Is there an odor?
An odor. The odor that would come would be from spent grain. So in our current operation, every day we make beer, or every day that we make beer, that grain goes away that day. If it was to sit there for a day or two, it would get somewhat raunchy, and you would smell that. I address it in the next slide. I'll get to it a little bit. We have a number of farmers who we've been giving that grain to, who come to our place, pick up that grain, and take it as extra feed for the cattle. J.B. King, Constantine Fuller, the Starlines, and the farm that I'm working on out in the country right now, will all be, everyone's got lining up to get that grain. There's a really, really good building dock area attached to that facility. And J.B. King, for one, has said that he would put his trailer there and come every brew day to take it out of there, because we don't want it there either.
Thank you.
The fourth thing on the paper here is, well, the granting of this variance, is it in accord with the code of the zone the property is located? Again, the area, oops, next slide. One of these circumstances not applied to other properties in the zone. The specific area we have, the issue we are concerned with is the ability to count bottling functions at this location. This seems to be treated differently within the code, but it's never really defined. We're willing to accept restrictions on hours of operation if necessary, or limitations on size if necessary. We'll deny all the variance to provide the point of reasonable use of the land and the building. We're bottling is a key element to what we want to do. We wouldn't bottle for probably two years. That investment in that bottling line is not something that we're gonna do just yet. We're trying to go forward by putting things into kegs, and it's a much more economical situation from our standpoint as a startup and trying to get product around Ohio, that if we're just delivering kegs and getting draft lines within Athens and Athens County and beyond, kegs make it a lot more financially acceptable at this point. We'll deny all the variance, but will hardship be created? I mean, the focus is less on hardship and more on opportunity. An existing building that fits well, it was built for the cheese barn and then built, and then used as the Athens grass and Beale grass since then. It's ideally suited for transportation purposes. It's already situated next to commercial enterprises, and we're just really asking for that 30 feet while agreeing to whatever limitations you may have for noise, safety, any of those sorts of things. Would it be the minimum that would allow reasonable use of the building? Yes. Brewing and bottling at this location are only inhibited by City Code 230407A8. I hope I purpleized that right. I don't know how to do that. Will this variance impair the supply of light or air to adjacent properties? We don't plan on changing that building. We wouldn't ever go higher. We wouldn't need to, and I think I addressed with the, we will get that, the air quality could be affected if the grains were to stay there for weeks, but again, everybody wants it. Who's everyone to get it out of there that day? Will it be dangerous in the streets, risk of fire, anything, or endanger public safety or damage adjacent property values? Traffic would be minimal, especially at the beginning. At this point, I would not imagine more than two trucks coming to pick up kegs at this point. And then we would be delivering uptown, but we deliver in a pickup, so it'd be a lot easier than all of the semis delivering beer that we currently have, you know, between six and two every day. The only fire hazard would be the boiler, and the state will take care of inspecting that, as they do currently at our facility uptown. And really, it doesn't, in my eyes, I don't really see it changing too much from the commerce that was happening with the last situations and the vision for the cheese barn. Will it confer special privileges? That would be denied, that would be denied to other buildings in the area. The special privilege would only be to allow bottling, which would not otherwise occur. Given the lack of other reference to the code, in the code to bottling, it's difficult to know what the concerns are or why the 100-foot restrictions in place. Continuing on. That kind of addresses everything within, within what you guys were asking of us. But I want to go in a little bit about the brewery and how it affects areas. Again, spent grain, we talked about that with King Family Farm, and our brew pub where our pizza crusts, we'd be picking that grain up on a daily basis on brew days. We'd be using a pre-existing structure that's designed for manufacturing, that's already there, that's been sitting empty for some time. And again, a great location, right there with the bike path and the freeway. And a lot of people have asked me, as the rumors have flown, we will not be changing Jack Eos' current situation uptown, other than we may be brewing a little bit less, more of a specialty high-end product, which will probably help the people who are living above us. They would probably like having one person working in there as opposed to a couple, and easing up on the amount that we use that building. And we obviously will continue to support the community that's been supporting us. When prohibition happened, we started dropping breweries left and right in the U.S. We were down to less than 20 in 1980. It's pretty crazy, but we know in Athens the need to support our local community. We are very good at that and supporting local farms, products, restaurants, what have you. While the brewery has benefited from that feeling that Athens has, that feeling seems to be taking root across the country as far as breweries are concerned. Hasn't necessarily happened on a lot of different, a lot of other levels, but it is happening in the brewery situation today. Over 100,000 jobs in the U.S., and that's just in brew pubs, which at the bottom constitutes about 90% of the beer market is craft brewing. So Budweiser, all those in-bath, whoever you want to call them, those larger companies still have 90% of the market share, but breweries are taking, small breweries are taking their shares quite rapidly, actually, which leads to our next fact, or next point. We'll have a lot of benefits to the city. We'll create a bunch of jobs. Initially, there'll be three jobs at that facility if passed with growth. The bottling line would necessitate a number two, three, four, one, full-timers when that comes on, and that's kind of where we're pushing that off a little bit. And those would, again, be full-timers in Athens up to, I don't know, eight to 10 possibly in five to 10 years if, you know, things continue as to happen. This will generate rip tax revenue for the city, for the city from the state, and as well as on those taxes through the employees that we will continue to hire. Tourism, I don't know if you guys have might have seen, we have a lot of people coming in this town to see what we're up to. We've been featured in a couple of regional publications, as well as Beer Advocate, Brad was on the cover of it in May, and that's a national publication, goes out to all the breweries. And our brewmaster in Athens was undercover because we're up to some things that are a little bit out of the box in the beer world, so... People are coming to see us. Obviously, I think we know the impact that Brew Week has had on local commerce and all of that. Our bottle sales, we have done some bottles, but it's one person filling and capping in a basement, where we sell about 1,000 bottles on one day, six times a year. This year, it'll likely be five times. And gosh, we'll see what goes from there on out. That's what those question marks are for. From 2005, we've, I think, reestablished the brewery in this town, as well as a restaurant out of what was a Hoolies. You might have seen in the last couple of weeks that we've been in the paper. I got a farm on Angel Ridge, and we're trying to incorporate a lot of that into what we do. I mean, the pumpkins to the raspberries to different herbs and whatnot that we can use in the brewery and or in the restaurant. We will maintain our independence, seek a, you know, slow kind of growth. We'd like to focus on southeast Ohio as our kind of target area for distribution initially, and with plans to grow from there on out. Right now, we have three fermenters into the brewery set, a year and a half ago, maybe, and we will push 900 barrels brewed in that facility this year. We don't plan on going over 15,000 barrels. The tanks will be bigger there by allowing more brew, more barrels per brew day. But, you know, Bell's Brewing Company and Dogfish had some of the smaller craft brewing breweries that are kind of infiltrating the market around here a little bit. There will still be 10 times the size of us, according to their size a year or two ago. We'll continue to collaborate with any local business that'll have us. You know, we employ local tradesmen, local craftsmen, local artists from, you know, for that new beautiful door to other things. We try to work with the community as much as possible, again, to support the people who are supporting us. As the farm has kind of started and our baking operation is fledgling, we've shut up the farmers' market, not as much as we'd like to this year, but that's something that's coming for years to come. It's a big list of a lot of different organizations we've worked with. I'm sure I missed quite a few, but that's something that will continue. That's very much a core value in our company. This variance will get out of Athens product out there to Ohioans, and we plan to stick into Ohio. This facility wouldn't allow beyond that. You know, if we ever get to a point, we would be putting, if we wanted a bigger facility, it would be in a different, different area at that point. Entrepreneurship. Breakbeer.com has us as the 74th best brewery in the world, and they're, you know, one of the bigger websites out there. Seems somewhat Ohio-friendly, but nonetheless, we're getting a lot of, making some waves across the brewing industry, and a couple of hotels can attest to that one. I included a letter with the three papers I just handed you from the Chamber of Commerce, citing the Provaire Design Group, where they did a study on economic, you know, ways to increase new ventures or to increase commerce within the area, and I don't really have the read on it. I don't think you guys have all that, so... We want to make this location an asset to the community and the city for the future. I mean, the cheese barn was built to be a place of commerce, and I don't think it's ever been given the legs that it was built for, and we'd like to try to put them on there. And again, we'll work with you, any different way to make this happen. If it's, if noises are concerned or whatever, we can restrict the hours, again, like I said, and yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Art? Any questions?
So you mentioned you would, you could have restricted hours, say, business hours eight to five or something?
We could do eight to five. It would preferably seven to, seven or eight would be better, but we could definitely do that. Like, we could, you know, keep out of nighttime or make sure that certain operations that nothing's noisy anyway, so...
Right. A few people I talked to, no one that wanted to come present or submit a letter, seemed to be supportive, but thought maybe a business hour would be convenient.
Or, I mean, shipping could come at certain hours, shipping, you know, deliveries coming in and out could be restricted to those business hours, no problem.
Well, so that was one of the questions I was asking. You said you could restrict your hours. I'm asking, in the process of the operation, I mean, you have to be there at certain times to do certain things.
Right.
That's, so what, so you're saying your optimum times are seven to seven?
Seven to seven would work, but again, we'll brew day, we'll be brewing in the mornings, and then the day continues throughout, but nobody would hear a peep out of us during any, any time after that mash-in, which would be in the mornings.
Well, I think in the mornings, you have the delivery trucks, if there were any, with the rear, you know, the beep, 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 beeping and stuff like that, that could be troublesome to an apartment complex or, you know, they're not far from a residential zone across Stinson Avenue there. But, I mean, it's just something to remember.
Yeah.
I believe in the city, the code for workers to begin is at seven or eight.
For construction, it's 7:00 a.m., but the noise ordinance is what would kick in on the noise, if that's an issue.
Well, it wasn't a big issue. It was just that people said, well, maybe it would be nice since it's...
And it is a B3 zone, so no matter what use, the trucking could be an issue.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference. So noise was another issue, but obviously, we're not gonna have bottles clanking on the assembly line.
Yeah, that would be internal.
So let me ask you this. When, how do you keg beer? So I know you have a keg, and I know you have the brewing pot, whatever you call it, and it just siphons off into that...
Correct. There's currently, there'll be a brew house with a kettle and a mash and a hot liquor tank, and there would be, the first venture would be four fermenters. They would, what are they? About 600 gallons of liquid, and then we transfer it to another tank of equal size and then right into the keg off of the bottom of that vessel.
So that's basically the operation?
That would be our operation, and that'll, I don't think we see that being less than 75% of our business.
I would like to add, he did point in there, sort of finding anywhere, anything else in our code, bottling works was the best I can come up with. I mean, like, obviously...
We don't have kegging.
Right.
No, we do. It's just not in code.
The thing I want to clarify, and we've already brought it up once, so let's clarify this. Back here on the page where you talk, where you define a microbrewery, and you say that one of the possible sales would be directly to the consumer through carryouts and/or onsite taproom or restaurant sales. So you have already said you're not gonna do that, and I want you to confirm that again.
At the beginning of this, of this venture, I don't want anybody coming and bottling us.
Okay.
Okay. In the end, I wouldn't, I don't want to rule it out. It's something that we wouldn't mind having, you know, in a limited kind of capacity.
For retail? You'd like to have a retail at...
Well, there's a couple of rules within the state of Ohio in brew pubs. You can do a tasting where you get a free sample, but you can't buy anything other than wholesale purchases like kegs. Then there's, that's really all we want. I mean, we have the brew pub up here, and I don't need any more chaos with that. Just the manufacturing of the beer is where we're going with that.
Okay.
So you're saying that tasting...
Yes. If you said that manufacturing the beer is all you intend to do.
Yeah.
Is that what he said?
I would, I mean, we don't want to lose the ability to have a taproom.
Well, I don't know how to address that, because if that's part of the plan down the road, I don't, whether you'd have to come back and ask for some kind of a thing that would use more traffic and you'd become a restaurant, sort of a tasting...
It seems like there would be enough of a change in this business if you would have to come back to all the events or get another...
So for the moment, he's gonna manufacture it and down the road.
We're looking at manufacturing.
You might have to come back for something else.
And that would require 200 feet, so...
Okay.
If I wanted to bar down there, you'll be the first to know.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is not related to the case, but I'm just curious if you have ever visited Budweiser Plan, it's Columbus.
The one in Columbus I haven't been to, but actually, this year, I've been to 45 different breweries this year. It's unbelievable that the amount of size that they pay the exact same amount per year for their license that we pay over there, and that we'll pay it on there ideally.
But, you know, that's the noisiest one I've ever seen or I've ever been to over there in Columbus, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Voice in one back.
Yes. Introduce yourself again.
I'm Don Linder, 33 Philo Confin Lane, Albany, Ohio. I represent the owners of the building that, and as a real estate broker. I'm very familiar with the building. I'm familiar with the history of the building. Obviously, it was, is developed as an economic development effort in the city of Athens. Obviously, it was, is developed as an economic development effort in the city of Athens, and it has the most and the best infrastructure for what they're intending of using. It has large water supply, as well as the drainage, sanitary drainage, that would have been satisfactory for a cheese barn, where there was a lot of water consumption. So that was part of an effort by the city of Athens, by the Small Business Administration, to develop that type of facility at that specific location for that sort of use. One question I have, and I've not even spoken to her, is I don't see why a variance is needed because there's no change of use. It was a cheese barn, and it was a glass manufacturing facility. It's still the same use, whether you call it a bottling plant or not.
Those other uses didn't require to be 100 feet away, the bottling works did.
But there's, there's no interruption of the, of the operation. I think it has to be greater than one year.
And it has been greater than a year. That is, nothing's happened, so for both reasons.
I don't think, the Beal glass did not vacate there over a year ago.
Anything else?
I'm sorry?
Anything else?
Well, I think this is great discussion, so, you know, I guess the, my discussion would be, I support it, but I don't see why there would be a variance, and I guess there would be justification for that, and why a variance would be required when there's really no change of use, and the intended use for that facility at that location has not changed. So that's a question I have to, to you guys, as well as Mr. Pass. So I'd like that answered.
Well, we can just...
Well, he's putting in a brewery, not a glass, glass...
It's a manufacturing facility. A different type of, it's manufacturing.
But it's not in a manufacturing zone. It's in a B3-zone.
It's always been, but it was intended for that.
Yeah, so we can, we can consider that.
And another time, thank you.
Well, we can consider it tonight, as we, as we go through the findings.
Their findings.
We can certainly consider that.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? General comment?
I would like to add that I did receive a phone call some time back. It was very much in favor of this project, from the previous property owner family. Unfortunately, the gentleman's not with us today, so I thought I'd throw that out there too.
I have one letter of support here from the Chamber of Commerce, which...
I think he's already alluded to it.
You've alluded to that. I just wanted to say they certainly were, and Wendy Jakmas is certainly requesting the variance and in favor of it. Is any of the other folks that were mailed or notified, Mill Street Apartments? Nobody? Okay. All right. I think we'll close the floor for discussion. Is there anybody here who would like to make a motion?
I move to grant the variance from ACC 230407A8 to case 1121V, Zone B3, 25 Campbell Street, to allow the bottling works business 70 feet from an R-zone, where 100 feet is the minimum requirement.
Second. I second. What have you done? Hollow seconded.
Oh.
Practical difficulty and undue hardship?
Well, I think Mr. Linder's quite as well taken. The difficulty is that somehow this operation, which is similar to previous operations, is now being asked to have a variance, and I have no objection to that. And it seems to be a matter of, almost you could say, topography. One little section that's not going to really be affected by any of the bottling is the part that's closed, so it just seems difficult.
And the other thing I think is that, the actual infrastructure was established for something that would use a lot of water and have good drainage, and so the building itself is designed to do this, would almost be wasteful to, let it go into decay.
Sure. And it's also exceptional that, that it would have been, the dairy bond, not the dairy bond, the cheese bond, would have been established with all the support from the community, and then now to allow something that's essentially similar to not be...
I was reading today that it was built with CD, CDVG money as well, so, and was designed...
Unfortunately, they hired a cheesemaster who did not know how to make cheese. Too bad.
Exceptional circumstances, I think, Ms. Hollow. Somewhat refer to that as well. Anybody else? Unexcepcional. Preservation of equal property rights?
Enjoying the same rights as businesses before it.
I would agree with that. Minimum variance?
Well, we're talking about 30 feet here, and it's, the residential zone is actually farther away than that would indicate.
And there's green space in between.
There is, including trees.
Which is rare. Absence of detriment?
No one's come forward, and I, and we only have support, so...
Right. And not of a general nature?
Not likely.
No.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Golsey.
Yes.
Ms. Hollow?
I vote yes.
Ms. Kanansky?
Yes.
Mr. LaVell?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Your variance is granted.
Thank you.
If you stay close, I'll...
Okay. We have minutes to approve from the last meeting. Minutes to approve.
We have to do September.
We have to do both, that's correct. September and November. I review.
October.
So do we approve the minutes?
I approve the September's minutes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. Any other business?
The October minutes.
We have to do the October minutes.
Oh, we have to do that separate?
Yeah, because we did the October.
So, motion for the October minutes?
I move we approve the October minutes.
Agreed. I second it.
Thirty seconds it. All right. Any other business? Meeting is adjourned at 8:38.